My name is Jim Lehan, to my right is Mr. Rob Garrity, to my left is Scott Bugby, to his left is Jack Hathaway, our town administrator, and to his left is Mary Harrington, our executive assistant. I need to remind everybody that this meeting is being both audio and videotaped. Mr. Hathaway, would you read the agenda, sir?
I'd be happy to. The Norfolk Board of Selectmen meeting of March 12th, 2013, commenced at 7:00 PM. First order of business, we have an Energy Committee update, followed by Town Administrator Report, including budget and town meeting, warrant discussion. Action items, we have three requests, and then a discussion item on the conservation restriction at paddocks and corrals, acceptance of minutes, and then executive session for the purpose, respect the collective bargaining or litigation.
Thank you very much. We have guests tonight. Are you all going to join us? Love to have you all up.
Not all at once.
We don't want to vacate the audience, but...
I don't have a crowd.
Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you.
I brought some show and tell stuff.
You've come bearing gifts.
Oh, just show and tell stuff.
Terrific. Before we start, if you could do us a favor and introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Andy Bakunowski.
Ray Angeloni.
And Lynn Gilligan.
They are Energy Committee, by the way, for folks at home.
And we have two members that are prior commitments, and one can't make it, so...
Okay.
And that'll be a topic, hopefully, at the end of this, a quick update about getting additional members.
You want to explain that one?
Yeah, that's a second point.
Okay, alright.
That's the new way of lighting that's going to come. I gave you a brief rundown of some topics, some spreadsheets, and some examples, and I can explain what all this is as we go through it. You know, the Energy Committee's mission was hopefully to save energy, but as I've experienced, and I think Ray and Lynn have also seen too, it's a little more than just saving energy. I mean, there's ways to save money in how we do business, but there's always an energy bend associated with that. And I think the only input I would like from the Board of Selectmen is if they happen to run into something, and I know Rob has sent us a few things that I've been able to get by email as well, is if there's a direction you want us to go in, by all means, throw it our way, and we'll see what's there. I think one of the longest-term items we've been doing is looking at baseline energy usage, and the need to constantly have current data is probably one of the most critical things to make this group successful. With my work and the 10 years we've been tracking data, it's actually fascinating to see that there's seasonal trends, and there's a lot of things you can explain, some things you can't, and you try to figure out why, and a lot of times you find that it's a system failure that's causing a jump, either in energy usage or something. And as we get into the package, I'll show you some of the things that we're doing where I work. It may be a little more time, but I think once it's in place, it's actually pretty straightforward, and once a bill is entered, that bill, that cost associated with that bill is entering the spreadsheet, but I'll talk about that a little bit later. What you have in front of you is some free bulbs the town got from the Executive Officers of Energy and Environmental Affairs. You'll see there's a spreadsheet, that's Pages 2 and 3. This is a spreadsheet for the town buildings. As much as it may not seem like a lot, we identified 115 bulbs we can change out, and the energy savings is about $3,000 a year, assuming 2,000 hours of use.
These retail for like $30 bucks a piece.
The yellow one, the one that's got the yellow, is actually, that's a commercial-grade replacement, and no more 60 watts, 70 watts, everything is always in lumens now, an output. That's the equivalent of about a 75-watt incandescent bulb. It actually uses 10 watts, so it's a significant savings. It is heavy, it is supposed to last 20 years, and there's always a savings associated with not even changing a bulb, and when you look at thousands of bulbs, you could be looking at several thousand dollars over the life of changing out of the bulbs.
How expensive is that bulb?
This bulb retails for $40. We got, the town received these for nothing.
As many as you wanted, or needed?
We got $8,000 at the prison. We got them for nothing. This is part of the utility fee fines, tenants from the storm damage or lack of response. And we went through two phases, and we're already, we're tracking some buildings already, we're seeing significant savings in some just buildings. The town won't see as many, partly, one of the future topics is to talk about some of the fluorescent lighting we have in the town, which ultimately is going to cost us more money in the long run because that technology's being phased out, but we'll talk about that in a bit. This bulb, this is the PAR-20, most of the bulbs at the senior center are going to be changed out with this, 41 years, the life of this is expected to be 41 years. So, most of us will probably be moved out, retired, and someplace else by the time they burn out. So, there's a quartet of savings.
We'd be happy with just still here.
Yeah.
Yep. So, but yeah. That bulb runs about $35. You can actually get the, you can get the non-commercial version at Home Depot or Lowe's, similar, whether Sylvania or Phillips. With utility rebates, probably about 25, 15, 18, depends upon who you go to, where you go.
Is this, this is a floodlight type of...
That's a recessed can, basically for recessed can, small diameter, four-inch. We do have six-inch ones, I unfortunately didn't have one available I could bring, but those, again, in the 20-year range of operating. I've played with a few at home to see how they light up, and my wife had no clue because that we have the, I put them in, replaced the halogen bulb, and it's amazing.
We've done it ourselves.
Yep.
Purchased them ourselves, and noticed a big difference in our energy bill the next month.
Really?
It's fully dimmable, unlike some of the CFLs, we had dimming problems.
And the bigger problem with CFLs, too, is the waste handling aspect of it, because there's mercury, and whether people know it or not, the compact fluorescents do have mercury, and we do have the ability to dispose them at the landfill, or the transfer station is universal waste, but that in itself has its own problem. These simply can be thrown out should they ever burn out. By the time they burn out, something else will come along, but still, it's a good...
40 years.
It's a good solution to a waste problem.
So, this is a standard light?
This, yeah, this is a standard light. This is a standard light, that's basically what they call a medium base. It's like I said, 940 lumens, equivalent of about a 75-watt.
And the color's closer to incandescent.
Yeah, it's incandescent. It's not harsh, this is the, actually, that has to do with what they call Kelvin. I don't know if you've seen the, this is 2,700 Kelvin, that one you have Jim in your hands is about, is 3,000 Kelvin. It's a whiter light, which is more like a halogen, halogen flood.
Do they make these for larger canisters?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. And actually, the Sylvania, Anne Phillips, and also Halo, who the manufacturers of the recessed cans make, actually, it's an insert, you pull the old unit out, screw it in, pop it in there, and you can't even tell that it's an LED. The light is identical.
Hmm.
And the recessed retrofits are probably about the same price. And if you can find a rebate that happens to be going on, all the better.
I've tried a few of those, and maybe I'm just not on the newest and latest and greatest one, but I did have trouble dimming those.
Yeah, you need to have a specific dimmer, it has to be a digital dimmer, it can't be the rotary or the slide. As we found out the hard way, it has to be a digital dimmer. It'll cook it, it'll cook this electronics pretty quick.
Excellent.
So...
Good to know.
Call home and...
Yeah, stop dimming, stop dimming.
Well...
Liz, lay off the dimmer.
So, yeah, the digital dimmer is, unfortunately, it's an $80, $75 dimmer that, if you're handy, you can easily change.
But it has no impact on any other circuitry in the house?
No, you're just basically replacing the switch.
No, I mean, if the lights are not on a dimmer...
That's correct.
Then there's no issue.
That's correct.
Hmm. It's amazing.
But yeah, that's the incandescent light bulbs, I mean, they're already phasing out in California, other places are phasing them out, too, and this is the way of the future. You really can't tell the difference between this and a lamp.
Yeah, I really like those ones a lot.
You have some of those?
I put halogens in them.
We've got them in the building.
Oh.
Yeah.
You have these in the building now?
Because Andy got them.
Yeah, we got them, yeah. So, I haven't gotten confirmation that we've got them all, but I think most of them have been delivered. And I know upstairs, the Finance Department, those were all recessed cans, because that addition, or that work was done after the building was finished, and Ron put them in, and you can't even tell. I mean, it's the equivalent of the 65 watt.
So, there's just a unit that fits into the old unit?
Yeah. No, they screw in.
Yeah, but if it's a big recessed can, this thing would be too far up, and it wouldn't give the light.
That's correct.
So, you need to put in some type of...
Yeah, it's, there's the recessed, I call it the retrofit, simply you pull the old, all the trim work off, there's a section you screw in with a pigtail, and the pigtail plugs into the unit, and then slide it in, and that's it.
Yeah, it's very simple.
Yeah.
And someone can buy those in Home Depot or your favorite store.
Yep, yep.
And these are that much more efficient than the energy-saving ones that we've all been sticking in our homes over the last three or four years?
Yeah, the compact fluorescents are having, I mean, they have their own problems, even though I've seen compact fluorescents last, I usually, I put a date on mine, and I'm having some now that are burning out after five years, which really isn't that bad. I dated the one I've got in my electrical room. We'll see when it finally burns out.
Hmm.
But it's the way to go, but the town's looking to save $3,000 for nothing, with zero investment, just some time.
And that's just the energy savings stuff?
Yeah.
And we got the free bulbs, too.
And the replacement bulb we need all the time, so it's more than that, yeah?
Yep.
And time and waste.
Because most of them have canister lighting at some point in the house, and most of them are the large canisters.
Yeah, and there's a lot of options out there now that you can buy off the shelf, and if you really want to get technical, you can look online, too, because there's companies that are just geared towards this. Just put the LED replacement.
Well, thank you for getting these. Thank you.
Obviously, we've been running almost nine months on the, excuse me, eight months, six months, seven months on the landfill.
Yeah.
I think that's an accomplishment for the town.
It's been a great success.
I'm surprised how quickly the snow shed after this last storm. And it was, I mean, it's there, I know there's some payments that are due us, but the things will catch up.
It'll catch up.
Yeah, things will catch up.
But at least...
They were closer.
At least...
We had some breakthroughs last week.
At least it appears like we're on the money with this.
Yep.
Yep.
So, you know, and as things have, I mean, there are other ways the town can save, too, with some of the larger PV projects that are going in, in NSTAR territory, as Nilo's National Grid, these net metering credit agreements, which are becoming more and more legally complex, but the portion of our bill, as I understand it, we get the Constellation portion and the NSTAR portion, where a portion of those credits can be applied to the NSTAR bill, which could reduce it further. We're just delving into that right now. There's some issues with the size and the volume of electricity that they're expecting us to buy versus what we can buy, so stay tuned on that.
Okay.
The PV system at the school, I don't know if you've had a chance to look online, I actually gave Andres at Norfolk Net the link, so you can check that out. I mean, the system seems to be running okay. I am in the process of working with Division of Energy Resources to get this as an asset registered with ISON New England, so we can start selling the S-Rex. There are some lingering issues with the electrical contractor that, I won't bore people with the gory details, but yeah, we'll get there, we'll get there. So, some of the future work we're doing, Solarize Mass, I have to admit, I missed the February 20th deadline because of, I couldn't get out of prison that day, literally, literally and figuratively. So, unfortunately, I missed the deadline. I think we can just let things sit for a little bit, we'll be ready for the next one and the next deadline in October, September, October. The benefit of that is that we can bundle PV systems if people are interested. One supplier of the equipment installer is there. You know, as part of that, some of the education that goes along with it, some of the coaching that goes along with it, and let people make the decision if they want to purchase the equipment, if they want to rent it, they want to lease it, they want to get the equipment with zero cost upfront. There's a lot of options that are out there. From firsthand experience, ownership seems to be the most lucrative, and that's one thing we need to look at, but options are there. I mean, my feeling is, give people as many options as possible. One of the things that Ray's working on, and we're slowly working on it, is getting some additional grants to evaluate smaller PV systems on a couple of buildings. Library and H.L. Day School is ideal in terms of their sole exposure, so we could, we'd like to start looking at that, bring a third party in to confirm what we suspect. One of the long-term plans of the Energy Group is to do a more thorough energy survey. Mass Save, NSTAR, all the utilities have money available to do upgrades. This transitions right into the big issue of the lighting retrofit, some of the fluorescent lighting we have, including the cans you see there, as well as the library. Several years from now, that technology won't be available, so you're going to be forced to change it. So, now that if you can change, change the fixtures on the dime, or most of the dime of the utility companies, we might as well do it. There may be some upfront money, but if you're going to be putting an LED retrofit in there, you know, it's a win-win situation because it's a long-term savings.
And once the technology is dead, it's less likely that there'll be incentives to change and that technology is phasing out.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, the one thing we need is who the contacts are at NSTAR. I know we have contacts at NSTAR, but they don't deal with the town. You know, at some point, if we can get those names, we can call them about whatever incentives that they're providing.
The issue is, we're leaving money on the table, and in the residential market, you can have a home energy audit every, well, basically, two years.
Two years, yeah.
And we haven't had a full-scale audit here. I don't know if we've ever done a full investment-grade audit, is what they're called. That's what the utilities do when they're going to spend money on you, because they will drop in the six figures on a commercial project, and we count as like a small commercial as a municipality. But we certainly haven't done even a casual audit in the last five years, I think. So, it is well past time to do this, and you can do these things for short upfront money.
Yeah. And by short upfront, I mean, you're looking at maybe, could be, I'd say, up to $10,000 seed money, which you would get back almost instantaneously, or within a matter of months, just based on savings, for six figures worth of work. I mean, it's, you know, you can't get a better return than that. And in some cases where, you know, if certain electrical regions need to spend money to demonstrate energy efficiency, work can be done, would be done at no cost.
Probably be helpful if we, in the next couple months, could get a couple of case studies?
Yeah.
I'm sure DOR has them, too.
Yeah.
Because you're being skeptical, "Oh, yeah, so you want 10 grand, okay." Sure, you're going to make that money back right away, but...
Well, I mean, I can tell you right now, I mean, the Norfolk well, UFC well stations, $42,000 of retrogrades of the pumps, the energy-efficient pumps, we got $36,000 back, and we're saving $5,000 a month on electric costs. Do the math, it's the two-month, two-and-a-half-month payback. It's, I mean, it's that, it takes a little bit of time, some paperwork, but...
And energy costs haven't gone up as much as they predicted.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's something to look at. One of the things we've been dabbling in is some of the safe routes. I know Tom, who works for DOT, isn't here, but that's one thing he's going to spearhead. There's apparently new offerings coming up to look at sidewalks and, you know, evaluate the safety. I mean, as much as that's not necessarily energy, but the indirect implications of putting a sidewalk in is obviously pedestrian traffic, reduction of cars, more bike access, all that stuff. So, all that's, you know, it's sort of, I guess, sort of where the Energy Committee's kind of going. Sustainability, exactly. One of the things we're really interested in doing is trying to get some publication, public education, and some outreach on the PV at the landfill. We've talked to Bob McGee about this, about getting Norfolk Cable and doing a tour of what's going on. Once the snow melts on the frame and roof, get some cameras up there so people can really see what's up there. And, you know, possibly even doing a solar tour of Norfolk, by my recollection of the number of systems that are in town, based on the placards I've, or the paperwork I've seen at the Building Department. I mean, there's a fair amount of solar in town, and a lot of people, you know, they want to, they want to do something. And, you know, I'm going to be the first to tell someone, you know, before you put a solar system in, you know, definitely look at doing some energy conservation work, because you can get a higher, more bang for your buck with less financial investment. But at the same time, you know, once you reach that point, solar is the way to go. You know, we don't have any good wind here, so that's the best thing. And the prices have come down 60% from five years ago, so the prices are dropping pretty significantly. There are incentives available, but they're, from firsthand experience, they're not worth the aggravation, because you're going to end up paying a consultant, third-party consultant, what you save in your rebate. So, you might as well just take the tax write-off and leave it at that, all in a day. So, I've attached on the last two sheets, this is an Excel spreadsheet that we use at the prison.
Okay, so this is prison data, this is not our data?
This is not, this is prison data.
Okay.
But it's, these are Excel spreadsheets that basically constantly roll year to year to year. Gives you a good snapshot of what you're using in the current fiscal year, you know, this particular location, you know, for January 2013, we used 377,000 kilowatt-hours at a cost of $21,000. The nice thing about it is that they also have the table on the far-right side of it that shows the savings versus the overages. It's always some running total. We use this all the time because we can identify if there's problems, you know, for example, if a motor is malfunctioning, sometimes you will see a jump, and it's just another tool we use for managing the energy usage at the prisons.
Or if you spend twice the fuel oil that you did the year before.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, seasonal, there are seasonal things. The second page is actually fuel oil, this is actually in barrels, so this is number six fuel oil.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. This is, actually...
Nasty horrible stuff.
It is, and this actually, this is, this location is actually part of, we're doing energy, deep energy retrofit, we're going to be going to natural gas there. And the beauty of it is, the gas company is paying for the hookup for nothing. So, that's, you know, that's just, something like this is something I would recommend the town should probably start looking at. I mean, I can provide the base Excel spreadsheets, but like I said, all this data is entered when the bills are paid, when things are keyed in, whether you guys write a check, you do electronic transfers, I'm not sure what you do, but that's, they just enter it in there. It's an additional three, four, five, six, seven lines of data.
Assets.
That's it. So...
That's a different tool that is available.
We have the electricity done automatically.
Yep.
We'd have to do fuel oil.
Yep. The, I mean, I know there's Mass Insight, that's, I think they came out with Mass Insight 2.0, because I just got an email at work that they, this is a new way to track. There's still some bugs in it, but, you know, it's the next version, but, you know, the critical thing is being able to track your data, track what you're using. Not only the cost, but also the actual energy. And it's just part of the, you know, part of the decision-making tree to decide where you go towards, or what you're going to address for energy conservation. I know we covered a lot. Do you guys have any questions? I mean, this is really a cursory overview of some of the things that the Energy Committee is looking at, and some of the things we're doing. But if not, we'll go to the last, last two items. We do need members, you know, in the interest of, I guess, making the Board of Selectmen's job easier, I mean, we'd like to identify potential candidates, let you guys know.
Sure.
And then, you know, not to say we're not going to do your job, but we'll identify the people that we think, you know, bring skill sets that we need. And, you know, I know we're two more, you know, maybe three more. I think we're geared, we're maybe nine? Are we supposed to be committee of nine?
I think it's nine at the moment.
It is nine.
I know, it was seven, and then it went to nine.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so that's, you know, that's kind of where we are right now.
But it's our committee, we can change it at any time.
Right, no, I'm all for it, just...
Okay, so, yeah, we just need to give you guys the names of...
Yeah. Do you have candidates in mind?
Haven't, I'm hoping that if people are watching this, and I was hoping the newspaper would be you, but they're not, that they would identify, you know, that we need people, we need people.
We can get, let's get that up on the webpage, too.
Yeah.
Is it up already?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. I mean, the...
It's kind of buried, there's a lot, yeah.
I know that doesn't get an overwhelming response, but...
We're beating people off with sticks for all the committees.
Yeah, you know, I know when you look at the Medfield, you look at the Medfield Energy Committee, I mean, I think they're what, 20, they're 20-plus people, but some of the people actually sit on a committee, I sit on as a leading-by-exemple committee with the state. They sort of know the drill, sort of know the routine, what you're looking for, but there's other people that are just there partly because they have an interest in it. Interest is fine, but at the same time, to be efficient and to move forward, you know, you need to have someone with skill sets, if they're familiar with what's going on. And I know there are people in town that have energy...
Great.
...an energy background, or, you know, this is, you know, this is a huge field, it's growing, and, believe me, I'm not an expert at anything on it when it comes to this, I just, you know, I think we've done pretty well with the limited, the limited opportunities we've had, but, you know, it's time to take it to the next level. So, and support of the BOS, one thing I ask is, you know, if something comes up, you guys want to prioritize it, let us know, we'll try and make it happen, and, you know, if we can push things through, you know, the light bulbs is a good example, where I think the time the email came out, to the time we actually got everything together, was, I don't know, 24 hours, 48 hours of working, so, you know, I mean, we can get it done pretty quick. You know, the benefit is, I already had the spreadsheet and all the stuff from the first phase we did last year, so it was easy to push that through. So...
Is there a retail value on those light bulbs, do we know?
The old ones?
No, the ones we got.
Oh, yeah, probably about $2,800 bucks.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
Good job.
$2,800 bucks, so...
Can I hang on to these two and return them tomorrow? I'd just like to see what they look like, the lighting of it.
I've got some upstairs, a few.
Yeah. This, Jim, this one I can give you, that one, that one, that one actually is going to find a home tomorrow.
Okay.
This one's going to find a home tomorrow, so...
I'll turn this tomorrow, I just...
And they also actually, they're starting to do decorative ones, so, for instance, in your chandeliers and...
This will be fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Lehan might not want that in the chandelier in the hall.
Yeah, the color is not yellow, I can tell you right now, the color that comes out...
Yeah, it's fascinating, it's just a fascinating bulb to me, I'd just love to see what it looks like.
Because that is a commercial bulb, the residential one actually has aluminum housing with a lighter heating thing. As we found out, you can't put those, you can't really put those in real wet conditions, but you can put them in damp conditions, like in a shower, where the, you know, where you've got the protective light, if you have a shower, you know, a shower light over it, that's fine, but as we found out the hard way again, you can't put them outside unless it's a protected enclosure.
Are those dimmable, Andy?
Yeah, those are dimmable.
This is basically designed just for a lamp, so to speak.
A lamp?
That'd be good.
Yeah, any place, any place you have an incandescent bulb...
That you put a normal bulb.
Yeah, except for outside, if it's like an outside.
Right, yeah.
But do they make them for outside?
They do make them for outside, yeah, but you're also going to pay, you know, $80 for a...
I mean, that's been the complaint that I've heard, and even, I mean, I've put, I think every bulb I have in the house is a more energy-efficient bulb, but probably not at this standard.
Those, well...
But you look at the cost, and then you look at the number of years it takes you But you look at the cost, and then you look at the number of years it takes you to get a return, and sometimes you wonder whether or not it's actually a reasonable investment.
Well, the CFLs are under a year. Like eight months on a CFL.
Those, those are gonna, those, those, the payback, straight payback is about two years, if you had to buy it out, right? And that assumes that you're on for three to four hours a day. If it's on for eight hours a day, we replaced some of the incandescents and compact foresters at the prison that are on 24 hours a day. And this one building that we monitored, that these lights are on 24 hours a day, we were saving 300 kilowatt-hours a month. Well, that may not seem like a lot.
It's half a house.
It's half a house.
That's substantial.
It's a half a house.
The thing I like about the, I just have the CFLs at the moment, but in fans, ceiling fans, 'cause ceiling fans wobble, so normal lights blow out a lot. The CFLs last forever in a ceiling fan, 'cause there's no moving parts in them.
The nice thing about these, too, is that there's no warm-up period. The CFLs have a, you know, 20, 30, 50, 80, two-minute, five-minute, depends upon how cold it is.
Half a day, sometimes.
Sometimes half a day. That's, that is a fraction of a second, it is on, it's at full, full intensity.
Really?
Can you use it in an Easy-Bake Oven, give off enough heat?
No, but we, we actually have some of those in some freezers, we're trying. They go to minus 40, so, and they work perfectly fine, so...
Well, thank you very much for getting all that stuff for the town, we're very grateful for that.
So, yeah, any, any ideas coming up, if you guys hear anything? I know Rob sends us emails every now and then, I usually get them like the day later or two days after he gets them. But, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to, trying to save money, identify things, provide opportunities for residents of, you know, whether they want to go solar. I encourage people, if they, they really want to do energy efficiency stuff, call Mass Save. They can go to the website, go to Mass Save and do the deep energy retrofits if they want to, I mean, and I know you did.
Just did my second energy audit, and we got, they recommended this time about some attic sealing and sealing around the top of the foundation in the basement. About $1,300 worth of work they quoted us, done for free by Mass Save. Already noticed a huge difference.
They did the work for free.
Well, yeah, weather sealing for the time being, weather stripping, weather sealing, air sealing, is, is free now. Because of the fines that the companies are paying.
Yeah.
It was still, it was $800 retail, and the guy put the stuff in like studs, I mean, it cost me, out of pocket, it was like $250.
It's 75, they'll cover 75% now of insulation. But 100% of the stripping ceilings.
The, the good thing is, there's a lot of opportunities, the bad thing is, is that the program is, the programs are constantly changing, where, you know, you know, Lynn, Lynn basically got hit at it right at the perfect time, Scott, I mean, what you got.
And I got the light bulbs, they gave you those light bulbs, like you said, Liz didn't like them, they're very brighter, I don't know.
She got that the first round, yeah, I didn't like some of them.
Oh, so it's already different and better now?
I don't think they, I think they give LEDs now.
Yeah, that, I did that probably two years ago.
Didn't do that long ago, okay, maybe it's been...
This is Mass Save?
MassSave.org, right?
My parents did it, and she, my mom did it.
I've never done an energy audit.
There's, um, there's a company called Next Step Living...
They put that for me there, too.
Actually, one of their executives lives in town. So Next Step Living is a Mass Save contractor, but you can go on their website and sign up, and they come out and do it. It's, there are many companies that are contractors to Mass Save, so...
Yeah, it was just a local guy from Walpole did mine.
Then the next step, it'd be...
MassSave.com looks like the same website, but...
I've always gone through the N-Star website to get to it.
Oh, it's .com, not .org?
Actually, I think either one brings you to the same place.
But, yeah, I mean, I've had, I've had them done as well, and, you know, some of the recommendations, some of the recommendations are, you know, a little bit beyond what you're, what you're hoping for, and there's other ways to deal with the, yeah, deal with it as well, so...
Well, you don't have to do anything if you choose not to, I mean, you're not committed.
It's options, they're giving them options, and...
You do get light bulbs. Yeah, they come in, they give you a light bulb, they take all the old ones out, and then they give you the new ones.
Well, they can have those recessed light bulbs for sure, 'cause they do, they take forever to light up.
Yeah, the reflector compact foresters, they're in the, they look like floods, and, yeah.
And that's different, that's immediate?
This is immediate, yep, yep. The, the ones that would fit, like the six-inch can, like you probably have at home.
I have the, it's the big cans.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're this big, they have seven LEDs, these have four, and they're, they're bright, they're very bright. I mean, they are, they are the equivalent of a halogen.
I put all those in from Home Depot, and the prices have come down phenomenally, like $25. First one I bought like that was $80, and it was a mail order, and...
So you bought the big ones as opposed to putting in the adjustment can and using the little ones?
I bought the big one, you know, to just screw it right in.
There's, all the options are there, I mean, you just kind of have to figure out what's, what's the cheapest for you and what the prices are, 'cause I've seen the prices are, are fluctuating, depending upon demand, so...
Well, it's been very helpful. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for taking the time. I will, we'll turn this, I won't keep it. It's fascinating to me that that's actually gonna end up looking at a light bulb.
I can give you one from upstairs if you want that.
Do you have one, just like that?
No, we'll get, we'll, we'll leave it with Jack, it won't disappear. Then it might disappear, I said, now that I think about it, I'll leave it with Marion. I hope you can find some more people, sooner the better.
Have one, then it looks odd, 'cause he has one in his house, it isn't matching, need multiple.
Doesn't that fascinate you to think...
Oh, yeah, it's so thick and strong, too. I want to say light, I wish we had a little thing, you could just see it in here now, but we'll go upstairs, I guess.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
That's great work. Let me ask you, what about that? I mean, I don't think any of us are opposed to it, we just have to work it through. Don't neglect it.
Okay.
I mean, if not this year, next year. I think we're three out of five.
I think we're, well, that actually was a good question, what did we do with vehicles? Did we actually adopt the policy? In a formal sense?
I don't think we ever did formally.
I don't think we did, we did not adopt it.
So then we're three out of five.
That's what it said, three out of five. Yeah, we did not, we did not.
I can bring that back at the next meeting, you can adopt it if you'd like.
I would bring it back.
We still do struggle with hand-me-down vehicles, I mean, 'cause we've got a situation, several going on now. Hand-me-downs going from the police department to building department in one case, and...
I saw the animal control officer on Facebook noting the difficulty of her, her vehicle.
It's a rogue, it's a rogue Facebook page. I did set up a town Facebook page.
Yes, I know.
Nobody will post pictures, I've been trying to get people to post pictures and they won't, but...
One of my kids got me to set up a Facebook page four years ago, and I forgot the password three years ago, and I haven't been on again since, so I guess I'm a little behind. And anyway, all right, why don't we go into the action items, Jack, and kind of...
Please approve the request, or consider the request, of the Federated Church to conduct their annual Easter sunrise service at Norfolk Cemetery on Sunday, March 31st, from 5:30 to 7:00 AM.
As a member of that church, I will recuse myself.
Okay, I will move to approve the request of the Federated Church to conduct annual Easter sunrise service at Norfolk Cemetery on Sunday, March 31st, from 5:30 to 7:00 AM. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion's passed.
Efficiency coming up. Please approve the request of the Norfolk, Norfolk Baseball to conduct their annual parade on April 20th, beginning at 12 noon at the HOD Day School.
I move to approve the request of Norfolk Baseball to conduct their annual parade April 20th, beginning at 12 noon at HOD. I, that's my motion.
Second.
I assume Chuck's okay with everything.
He'll be leading the parade. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous.
Finally, please approve the request of the Garden Club to use Town Hill slash Bandstand on Sunday, Saturday, sorry, Saturday, May 18th, from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM for their annual perennial plant and bake sale.
I move to allow the Garden Club to use Town Hill slash Bandstand on Saturday, May 18th, from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM for their annual perennial plant and bake sale.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a question, 'cause I asked for permission to place two signs, we have to include that?
We do, yeah, we take care of that for you.
Okay. No questions then?
Point of information, we, I think we voted to give Jack the authority on sign locations several years ago, you didn't know it.
Perfect.
You did not know, so he...
Go to it, Jack.
He has the benefit of being the one people get mad at.
Actually, Marion takes care of the whole thing.
He's further delegated.
I don't think we took a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Pretty soon it's gonna be some fourth grader at HOD. It'd be weird, since HOD only goes to third grade.
I know that the budget and the warrant are really what we want to talk about tonight, so why don't we knock off the conservation restriction, so to speak, no pun intended?
I shared that with each of you, hopefully.
You did.
Yep.
Jim had a comment or suggested it.
And I communicated with the chairman of the Conservation Committee, and he was, he shared back that the Conservation Commission is comfortable with the status of the restriction. Town Council has reviewed it. I had some questions that I shared with you, but those have been answered. So I think the restriction is ready to be... Unless you have further questions.
No, I had a couple of questions that I wondered if the Conservation Committee was okay with it, but if you're saying that they're fine, then I'll defer to them.
Yeah, I view our signature as kind of ministerial, they negotiated it.
Not view it, is. I mean, this, yeah. Are we comfortable?
Yeah, I haven't approved it.
We probably should do a motion to approve it and then sign it, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the conservation restriction between the town of Norfolk and... Who's the actual...
Bella Rosa Stables LLC. It's Bella, B-E-L-L-A-R-O-S-A Stables LLC.
Bella Rosa Stables.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This one's been on the table for a long time, it's kind of...
Yeah, and I guess just a...
Do you have an original that we can sign?
Uh, no, I don't, I have that for you tomorrow when you...
I have an original, well, all I, it just has that one circle on it, if that doesn't create an issue. Up to you.
Yeah, you can sign that if you want, and then we'll just, we'll swap out that front page.
It is gonna need to be notarized.
Yeah, we'll, we'll prep a package for you.
Okay. All right.
Oh, just related to that, we, last meeting, we talked about the trails at Paddocks and Corrals, and the... So you've seen the, the, I sent a letter to the planning board, and they're gonna have a discussion about it this week, but advised them that we didn't want to have, Jim helped me edit the letter, but we didn't want them to construct any trails on the new property, on the property that the town is acquiring. Just maintain the trails that are on the old conservation land, and then, really, the planning board already had in another part of their decision that they, you know, set up the trailhead and any signage per their regulations, so... I think that's been communicated as you wished.
Are you guys okay with the additional paragraph I put on there?
Yeah, no problem.
And in talking with the chairman, the, their consultant has confirmed, if you will, the process. So, there's really, it's a formality now. But in fairness, I think Jeff was right, wanting something from our board, the action that we've taken, which was on the request of the planning board. Okay.
Comes out in a big circle. I have a few town administrator items other than the budget and warrant, if you want to do those, or do you want to do... So just as a reminder to more of the people at home, the new town election will be on April 30th at the Freeman Kennedy School. That's a week earlier than normal, but that'll coincide with the state, the primary for the state, the US Senate. And then we decided to have the town meeting on May 7th, so that'll be on the first Tuesday in May, which will, is a week later. And that'll be at the, that is not at the Freeman Kennedy School, as I wrote there, it'll be at the junior high at 7:00 PM. I think people, it was nice to show off the Freeman Kennedy School for that one meeting, but a couple of concerns, the chairs weren't very comfortable, and junior high's better equipped for the event.
Did have a good working PA system, though, gotta give them that.
Yeah, we need to change the batteries every 15 minutes, which was nice. We get the Energy Committee working on that.
I know.
The Regional Communication Center spent too much of my time lately working on that, but we've hired an engineer and an architect there on board, we actually met again today, introduced the architects and engineers to the rest of the team, including the chiefs and a couple of head dispatchers and other folks. We've also developed a few kind of working groups within the, the operations. We've got some people working on the third grant. We've received 1.4 million in grant funds from the state in 2012, 900,000 in 2013, and we're working on the 2014 grant. We've actually finally started spending some of that money on architects and engineers, so that money isn't just going unused. But just for reference, the Shrek, which is about the same size communities down in Hingham, was about a $5 million project. We're all convinced that they had more, they had more build-out to do. We really think it's, you know, taking a room like this, and you gotta do a lot of the, I'll call it infrastructure, a lot of the, getting the power and the CAD 5 and all, you know, all the technical stuff. But there's no structural, not a lot of structural work to do to the building, so we won't be at the, we don't think we'll be at the $5 million cost, we'll be quite a bit below that. And we're trying to do it, obviously, all on the grant, at the cost of funding from the grants. Also an operations committee made up of the chiefs, in some cases designated, but our chiefs are involved. They have to work out a lot of the developing standard operating procedures, you know, just codes that they use, you know, how they're gonna communicate between similar-type vehicles, you know, can't have a, can't have a car one in every town, for example, is a very simple problem. But, but standardizing how they respond to different events, you know, we gotta either standardize them all or make it simple enough so that the dispatchers can easily transition from if they're responding to, if they're calling out the police force in Norfolk versus police force in Rhythm, for example. So there's a lot of work to do there, but they're on their way. And then, similar with an IT team, we've got to, you know, standardize the CAD systems and the, all the logging systems that, you know, the police officers and the police departments and the fire departments use to go back and look at, you know, report writing or whatever research they have to do. You know, dispatchers spend a lot of their time not just talking on the radio or the phone, but also logging everything that's going on, and obviously have to be able to go back and use that information in an intelligent way. So there's a lot of things that are going on there. We have a house bill for the home rule petition to get the REC developed, 'cause the REC is gonna become an independent entity, kind of like the King Philip Regional School District, but that's something we approved at town meeting a year and a half or so ago. It's now finally getting through the legislature, so hopefully that'll be completed. There's a new rep in Franklin who is also on their town council, who's been kind enough to kind of follow that through the process.
Has the governance process been finalized? Should I say, is there a recommendation?
We've got a draft IMAs that certainly can, I can email it over to you, we can look at it together. Yeah, I think, I think that's, we've got a pretty good recommendation.
Chiefs and town administrators?
Yeah, town administrators, kind of at the board of directors level. Obviously, then we're reporting back to you, you know, we don't escape your oversight, but, yeah, no, no selectmen on the board of directors, I think, is, if I'm reading between the lines.
No, I think that's a good thing.
Which, we've had that conversation before, I know.
I don't want to see this politicized, you need to have people that are operational overseeing this, you don't, you don't need...
And it'll still be, you know, the town will still be involved, obviously, because we'll still have a budget to be approved every year.
I was asking, 'cause I was more concerned about the other towns, I think you knew the position of this board, that we didn't want to politicize this, we wanted to do this.
Make sure you weren't taking a left turn on me, that's all.
No, 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 I was just wanting to be sure the other towns didn't take a left turn.
Nope, nope, I'll, I'll head in the right direction. Once we get the home rule legislation done, then, then we'll be able to sign, then we'll be able to execute all the IMAs, so... I'll share that with you again, just to make sure that you've seen it, and don't have any questions about it still. One of the things that we do need to talk about, and I think we've talked about, but at a very high level, is what we feel comfortable as far as a dark station. You know, and what I mean by that is, obviously, our, our, right now, our dispatchers are the door greeters. That, you know, obviously won't be the way of the future, and that includes Rhythm. Rhythm won't have that ability either, 'cause the idea is they're kind of gonna be locked in a back room, if you will, and won't be able to leave the desk to, and we don't want them to leave the desk to answer the door. So the, in our case, the Norfolk Public Safety Building will be potentially dark. You know, at, likely in 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, there will be administrative staff in there, there will be... Occasionally, there are, you know, there's usually off, senior officers, lieutenant, lieutenant-in-chief on the police side, chief on the fireside there, but, but at night, there, there could be situations when there are no officers in the building. So what has been done in other communities and what we think is the best solution for us is, obviously, either we hire staff to sit there, which, you know, not very cost-effective, but some towns want it that way.
And the fire staff is there 24/7?
Well, unless they're on a call.
Unless they're on a call, right. I mean, the concern I would have is, let's say someone going down Main Street has a, a severe traffic accident.
Yep.
And they don't have a cellphone, and it's 2:00 in the morning, and, and they come up to a police station and, and they can't get help. Yeah, I mean, I know that we talked about a box and, you know, where they could, it would immediately dial into, you know, and so on, but sometimes you need a human being there ASAP. I mean, if the person is hurt, seriously hurt, or who knows? I mean, fortunately, we don't have a lot of that, but it only takes one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so having it, having, not having a human being there, and I was hoping that we could talk about with, with fire, and having someone at least there.
Well, and fires, you know, especially with this new proceed, new, uh, callback process that we have, um, so when they get, when their ambulance gets committed, we have an automatic callback now, so there's, so the, the likelihood that nobody's there is, is-
Pretty slim.
Pretty slim, now. So, and so just to expand a little bit about on what you touched on there is, you know, what a lot, what some towns are doing in these regional situations is, you know, it's not just the, the electronic door and like they have at the school, and there's a little tiny camera, I mean, they have a full-fledged, maybe not that size, but they have a monitor there, um, that's, you know, constant 24/7 communication with the dispatch people, so you just walk up to it and you don't have to physically do anything, you can, you can start talking to the dispatcher, assuming they're looking at the screen, but, uh, and then there would be the ability to, there'd be a safe room, so-
That's what I was gonna ask you.
They'd have the ability to buzz you into a, a second, um, foyer, and then that door could lock behind you, so if, you know, domestic violence situation, you can get somebody into a, uh, into a safe room. Now that, obviously then what is happening at the same time all that is going on is, you know, as soon as the dispatcher starts talking to you and you have a serious issue, they're dispatching a police officer who was in Norfolk on the road, um, to the building immediately, so, you know, you shouldn't be more than two minutes, three minutes, tops, um, without somebody physically at the building with you.
But that, that can be a long time if, if there's a really hazardous situation.
I drove my mother-in-law up to the building one time, um, with a medical problem, so.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
Be interesting to see if there is any data, um, incidents in the nighttime.
From our department, how it happens?
We have that data.
Cole's pretty-
We have that data.
We'll walk in, kinda, David.
He's, uh, good at, yeah, I'm sure they probably can just do it on, based on location, you know, so the location of 100 Main Street or, they can probably pull it up pretty quick. Uh, so, further down the list. Uh, the budget, we're gonna talk about a little bit more, but, uh, so I'll skip that for now. Sorry, I'm getting buzzed by a certain chief. It's not an emergency. Health insurance, uh, we, as you've told you, we've, you know, been renewed at our current plan design for health, for health insurance at 7.62%. The insurance committee, the employee insurance committee, which is, you know, a committee that's driven by general law, it's a mix of the, you know, mix of the unions, uh, and retirees, as Marion and I talked about today, the non-union employees really don't get a say, but that's, uh, it's all right, it's just Marion. They are reviewing different plan designs. Maya's, we've asked Maya to come back to us, um, and give us different options for, you know, are there, can we increase any co-pays? Can we talk about, uh, um, you know, some of the hospital visit costs, uh, you know, not just the co-pays for office visits, but for, you know, the things that we look at every year, but they're, they're trying to come up with some different options, and see if there's anything that we can do to reduce that increase or ideally make it go away on the, on the premiums.
What was it last year? Yeah, but the year before, it was, wasn't it in this range, too?
Last year was a little bit lower. I thought it was-
It was less.
Four, four to five percent.
Four and a half, I think, yeah.
It did have like a 22 or something.
One year we got nailed.
More five years ago.
Yeah, we got nailed a big, it was about 14, 15% one year.
It's been, uh, it's been pretty good the last-
The last two, three years, we've been pretty lucky. And, and actually compared to what I understand the market is right now, 7.6 is even reasonable relative to other increases that towns are seeing.
Uh, Scott and I also, Scott Bragdon and I also met with, uh, a, um, company, EBS Foran, who's, does a lot of business with municipalities. You know, and, and we're not, we haven't contracted with them, but we've asked them to do a review of our insurance. I think if, you know, it's one of those deals where if they, if we, we could broker with them long-term for, um, but right now they're doing an analysis of our, of Maya's costs and seeing where our, looking at our history, um, and telling us if our premiums are set at the right rate, so. So we're, we're gonna have a little bit of ammunition anyway from them. And we did this about four years ago with a different company, um, and it was good. It, uh, you know, I think it gets Maya to sharpen their pencil a little bit on, uh, on what they're offering us. So we'll give those results to you. The other insurance committee, insurance committee two, that's the, uh, one that's made up of residents, is, uh, continuing to look at the building and liability insurance, and, uh, we'll come back with options, uh, this spring. Legal, I'm happy to say that, uh, you know, unfortunately we've got a number of lawsuits going on, but, uh, the one that we had with the water department, um, which may not even really been on your radar because it was a small claims court, but, uh, we did, we did win in that one.
Paid legal fees, so, a win for losing.
Yeah, the guy who did the, one of our leak surveys for us, and, uh, only found a couple, and actually got us working on-
Oh, I remember this, yeah.
Got us working on a leak that didn't exist, so we told him we weren't gonna pay for his services, and, uh, we brought another guy in who found, unfortunately, you know, good news, good news is we were right, but the bad news is he found, you know, 12 or 13 more leaks right after that, and, uh, so, um-
Yeah, I remember that.
We prevailed. The other, uh, long-term case that's been going on that you know about is the Pine Creek, uh, versus Norfolk. That one's, uh, we were supposed to have a hearing this month, but that's been canceled, uh, due to the judge's schedule, so hopefully, he's asked for dates in April that, uh, all the attorneys can meet. Hoping that's gonna come to conclusion at some point soon. Other just, uh, notes that, uh, some things I've been thinking about as, as we're getting farther along in the budget process is, uh, town planner, and I, and I, I guess, I, you know, it's something I'm trying to put into the budget. I wanna, you know, I think, I'd like to hear, and maybe not tonight, but hear from you, um, what you all think the responsibilities, um, you know, part-time, full-time. I mean, it ranges from, uh, you know, obviously just being the town planner, um, oversight of some of the land use administrative staff would be a possibility. Uh, zoning enforcement, um, is something we've talked about, so I wanna make sure I'm, um, I guess I'm just asking for the board to come to a consensus, and I can put together my thoughts if you want, as a starting point, and, uh, you can go from there, or unless one of you wanna do it.
Well, I, I'd like to encourage all of us to do it independently. I mean, uh, I, I've spent quite a bit of time on this, so I come with a bias. Did, I, I can't remember, did you see the information that I got from Bob McGee regarding this, or did he only send it to me because I asked him for it?
I don't think he sent it to me. I don't, I don't recall it.
Okay. Well, I still have, I'll, I'll forward it to you, and if you can get it on to, I was asking his thoughts on, on the town planner and what role he thought they would play, and obviously, he, I won't say obviously, but he, he is strongly in favor, and was quite thorough in what he thought the benefits and the functions could be, and that will be, I think, be helpful when you look at it. And I can also send to Jack to send to you some of the other towns that I looked at that have done this. By the way, there is a, a growing trend, um, of bringing in town planners and having them be the zoning enforcement officer. It was limited to just a few a while back, and, uh, five more towns have done that, just in the last 12 months. So there, it's catching on, so to speak. And, and from my perspective, one of the critical components is, is, uh, the issues associated with our bylaws. We need a professional. The last couple of town meetings haven't kind of proven that. You know, we, we, we need someone to really sit down and go through these, and in some instances, they're contradictory. You and I, Rob, talk about the one where you and I and Jack and someone else looked at one bylaw and had four different interpretations of it, and, you know, you, you can't have that.
Right.
So. Can we put that, uh, we, we can't let it go too long. Can we all kind of commit to putting this on the agenda for the 26th, right? And having a meaningful conversation whether or not we wanna try and fund this in the budget?
Sure, that's fine, man.
Okay.
I'd already done some research, so.
Okay.
I could send you some of the job postings, they're out there.
Okay. All right, Scott?
Yep.
Okay.
One of the things, too, that, that, uh, is, I wanna say is becoming apparent, but it's becoming, well, it's becoming apparent, is, uh, just the complexity of the facilities and, you know, even with the energy committee here, tonight, it, uh, so just, I guess, as we talk about that zoning piece, you know, right now the facilities department is made up of the building department as well. And the zoning, and zoning is layered into that, too. Building now, you know, there's a need to expand on, the complexities of the buildings we're dealing with is becoming more and more, you know. As we added this building, it got a little more difficult. Library is a little more complex, HVAC. Freeman Kennedy School is a whole new, uh, realm of, of, I mean, it's, you really need a computer science degree to be the facilities manager. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, if we take zoning out of the building department, moving into a planning department, there may be opportunities to, to expand what we're doing in the facilities department, take over, you know, maybe give them, the school more assistance. I'm trying to go. Talked about solar and NSTAR, we, uh, Rob reached out to some of his contacts. We've also worked with town council, who reached out to NSTAR and reminded them of their responsibilities to give us our credits, so, uh, we've been promised our credits, uh, again, uh, this month, so hopefully we'll get, uh, I think right now it's about $180,000 that they're, that we're owed, so. That will be, uh, we'll have some, we'll have some real cheap, um, electricities, electricity bills going out the rest of the year.
Are we gonna be able to, um, because we've, we've still been making payments, is this gonna work okay for the budget? For this fiscal year? Are we gonna get these credits insufficiently enough to have the wash we anticipated this fiscal year?
Yeah, 'cause we, we, in most cases-
Programmed some extra flexibility in the budget.
Yeah.
I know we did, but I want, I mean, will we, will we recapture sufficiently based on what we projected? Where is this delayed? Because we've only got three months left in this fiscal year.
Well, assuming NSTAR lives up to what they said they're gonna do, and, and we get the credits, I don't know what's gonna happen if, if, if this is what you're asking, if, you know, if we've got $210,000 off the credits for the rest of the year, but we only have $150,000 of expenses? Is that what you're asking?
No, the other way around.
More expensive than credits.
Others who have paid out more than the credit, based, and we anticipated the credit.
No, I think, 'cause I think in, in most cases, and I think actually in all cases that I'm aware of, we've, we budgeted as if the credits weren't gonna happen, because we were worried.
We, we did, but we, we kept some of them, I'm thinking of the school, for example.
I'll have to look at that one. I, I don't think, uh-
School's the one I'm really thinking of.
Well, that's also complicated by their system being up, which we didn't really account for either.
You know, I don't think it's gonna be a huge financial issue one way or the other, but I did, it, that's one I would like to look at to see how, I think it was 200,000?
Yeah.
That we put in there that we assumed, which ended up-
Oh, and they're, but, yeah, for their line item, yep.
Additional operational money for them, which is a good thing.
Yep.
But I'm wondering how we fared on that trade.
That's an interesting thing. Um, we've got now, we're gonna have, what, six months already now worth of, um, operation in that school? It would be interesting to see if it's, how it's coming in against benchmark on heating and electricity.
And, and it also should be a discussion we have in terms of this year's budget with the schools, on how we're gonna manage that. I mean, we, we pulled that out of their operational budget last year. Do we wanna do that again? You know, or do we want to let them-
To go back to the normal?
Yeah, back to the, I, I don't know the answer. I mean, we need some data to figure out, because we don't want it to be unfair to the schools.
No, I, I-
But in the same thing, we need to be sure that we've, we've got a reasonably fair exchange, and, you know, we're not picking up an operational cost that, over which we have no control.
Right. I mean, I think the, the good accounting practice would be to give them back the-
I, I would tend to agree.
The budget and the expense, so.
I mean, it made sense to do it last year.
It's because of so many uncertainties, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
You'd see a misleadingly large increase in their budget, though.
Right. So we just have to do the opposite of what we did last year.
Right.
We broke it out for-
I mean, it'll be a trade. It'll, it'll be a left hand to right hand, and now it'll be the right hand back to the left hand, so it'll be a trade.
Depends if the left-
Because if you're gonna give them back the expense, you give them the money.
Right.
You knew there was, I shared some information with you, there was a, a dog challenge that the mayor, animal control officers handled, and, uh, I wrote a, uh, an order just making that a permanent restraint on the owner's two dogs. We're waiting to hear back from them. Hillary's been working with the family, so, you know, we're gonna try and get some training. Hillary believes in her professional opinion that if the dogs get some training and I think, uh, some education for the family on how to deal with the dogs, that they can, uh, have better performance in the future, and we can, we can remove that permanent restraint, but, uh, for now, until that education happens, it's, the dog's been permanently restrained to be on a leash. And muzzled, uh, in one case.
Uh, you skipped over the KP part.
Oh, just, uh, that's a, um, yeah. So the numbers, the, I did. So the numbers you, you saw last week or two weeks ago-
In case you didn't think we were paying attention.
He said he was gonna handle it on the budget.
Yeah, so in case you weren't paying attention. The, the budget request hasn't changed, the, uh-
Touche.
Tentatively scheduled, uh, meeting of the chairs is hopefully on for next Thursday. I'm waiting to hear back from, uh, Plainville, 'cause he's meeting with the selectmen tonight, to make sure that that chair can meet, and, uh, hopefully the school committee and-
And that's, that's in the evening.
Yes. Yeah, uh, Plainville and, and us, I threw it out there, Plainville and us, I thought could do it during the day. But I'm not su, I don't think Rhythm can do it dur, during the day, because their chairman has a job.
Either way. Chairman has a job. The, the other two are unemployed, is that the intent?
I don't know, I'm not, I don't wanna throw stones.
Okay. Well, I, I hope that comes to, you guys are okay with that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, move on to the warrant, if you want.
Sure.
I think Marion gave you a new. Cole just wanted me to let you know that UConn is down by nine at the half.
Talking about the ladies?
That was the text I was getting from Cole. Yeah.
Is he there?
He is.
I would note that the, um, World's Greatest University, uh, Northeastern, is on the cusp of making it into the NC double A's for the first time in-
No, the cusp died yesterday.
Did it die yesterday?
Fantasy.
God.
17, sorry, cusp man. Because Tucker was at Delaware. Delaware got knocked out by James Madison.
I wasn't gonna tell him.
I know, as you say, I should have-
I had that DVO, I was gonna home and watch it.
I'm sorry, next you're gonna say they're gonna win the bean pot, next.
You've ruined it.
Hey, they made it to the finals, alright.
They made the finals.
They did. I have to say, I was impressed.
I was rooting for them. They just should have, they just took the second period off.
All right.
Sorry, Rob. I didn't know you didn't know.
Damn.
You're a day behind, but-
Have to just erase the game now.
Oops.
Okay, let's, let's, uh, let's get at this.
Um, so the warrant hasn't changed for, until probably the last page.
Well, how about Article C? Do we have a number?
Uh, no, 'cause I need to really kind of figure out the, uh, once I get the KP budget out of the way, then I'll-
So that, we, we are not prepared to talk numbers tonight?
No.
We are away, how far away are we from that?
I think if we, if that meeting that we're gonna have with the chairs is productive and we can all come- I think if we, if that meeting that we're gonna have with the chairs is productive and we can all come to an agreement as to what KP we funded at, then I can construct the rest of the, the budget.
Okay.
I'll do my best.
Um, I, I, can I bother you with one more number question?
Absolutely.
It's actually two, it's a question in two parts, through the chair to you. First part, what's the free cash we're entering with? And the second part is-
Four hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars.
Four forty-eight?
Yeah.
What's Snow and Ice up to?
Probably a similar number.
I don't think it's quite that high. It, it's, it's over three.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right, I mean, it's the-
The total with the appropriation.
About that number, the deficit won't be that high.
You were talking deficit, weren't you?
Neither way.
I know, that's one of your favorite topics, so I assume you're talking deficit.
What did we, what did we, uh, come to conclusion on that we were gonna increase the Snow and Ice budget by? I know Rob was passionate about that, and wanted-
I thought we said one fifty.
Two, one fifty.
Up to one fifty.
Okay, that's what-
Well, we can increase it by one fifty if you'd like.
No, I wouldn't like.
We probably should. Can we? I don't know.
Tell, you call the chief and tell him not to order the cars.
Well, hey.
Gotta pay for it.
Pay me now, pay me later.
Those are ordering.
I just thought I'd throw that one out.
That's gonna stop those cars.
So, I did write, uh, a couple of articles at the back. Article Z and Article AAA. So Article Z is the, is the one about selling Old Town Hall, and I, we can add a, uh, Jim had talked about adding a provision in there, but, uh, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to advertise in a local newspaper and sell at a public sale on such terms and conditions as it may deem at the best interest of the town, all or portion of the property known as Old Town Hall located at 100 Main Street, including the adjoining town-owned parcel. Such sale to be made on behalf of the inhabitants of the town of Norfolk."
The lot that's next to Old Town Hall is in the B1 district. We, we did clarify that. Just, just to point a conversation, the reason I asked Jack to change that language, you know, we, we talked last meeting that there are a couple of options that we could look at here. You could combine that lot and Old Town Hall, you have a building lot that could, it's in the B1 district, could be mixed use, could be residential, has value, you could sell that, you could keep the parking lot. You need access to Town Pond anyway, um, you know, which can be done a number of ways. The alternative i- is that if you were to sell the entire lot, and, and the reason I'd like to keep the flexibility is, is that we don't know until we put it out there what the value is in terms of the differential between one sale versus another. And let me just give you an example, let's say that the lot is worth, and I'm making a number, a hundred and fifty grand.
The lot to the right of the-
The lot, the lot to the right, including Town Hall.
Oh, including Town Hall, the building in the right-
Let's say you can get a hundred and fifty grand for that lot.
But if you just, like, forty thousand square feet, you're talking about, yeah.
Right, okay. And we retain the parking lot, which generates three to four thousand dollars worth of revenue, but is a great convenience to the town. But remember, it's off the tax rolls. If, because you have two abutting pieces of property that if combined with the entire piece of property that we own down there, could make it very attractive for a developer, a development we actually would like to see in the center of town, we might get an offer that is substantially more. Now, the parking lot has value, but, and again, I'm making numbers up. If, if someone offers us a hundred and fifty thousand for a single piece versus five hundred thousand for the whole piece, at least from my perspective, that parking lot's not worth three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because there are alternatives to that. And you're getting, and then you have to factor in the fact, the potential revenue that you would get from the development that would go in there. So, you know, what I'm hoping is that, that we can explain to the voters that here are the two options. We have to do something, I, the time is well overdue, we have to do something. Here are the two options, and we'd like to retain the flexibility of weighing those two options, because we just don't know what the market's gonna tell us. And, and you can maintain an easement to Old Town Pond, all of that can be all worked out, I mean, that'd be a condition of the sale. I, I would just like to see this board have the option, I think it makes good sense for the community, because we're charged with making the best deal for the town and in the best interest of the town. And, and if we don't have the flexibility of weighing both options, and we're restricted to say a single-site sale because of the way the article's written, versus having the flexibility of making it a full lot sale, and there's that much financial difference?
It's better to know more than less, yeah.
We would be remiss in, in, you know, in our, in our job, I think.
There was-
That's the reason I asked Jack to change that wording. So, your thoughts? I'll open it up.
Uh, I think, well, the cons, what's missing here is, um, the Town Pond.
In what regard?
Guaranteeing access.
We did have language last time we did this, that there would be, you know, there was talk about, uh, having a exit strategy, I guess, for recreation out of the Old Town Hall, and then also, we were gonna maintain the whole parking lot, and we could, we could put a, we could say in there that we're gonna retain access to the Old Town Pond.
I mean, you would, you can do that, I mean, you can, you can deed in a right-of-way
Right.
into the Old Town Hall and make it a condition of sale. I thought, I thought I said that, because you're right, we, we have to maintain that.
Yeah, but if it's not in the article, you don't have to.
Uh, then we need to put it in the article, yeah. Let's add that to the article.
So, providing that-
That, that any sale would retain right-of-way privileges to, any such proposed sale would retain right-of-way privileges to Old Town Pond.
You're saying opposed to selling the Old Town, didn't you say before the last meeting, or you could include Old Town Pond too?
Oh, no, I know, I wasn't implying that.
Actually, I don't have, that, that might be problematic, 'cause wouldn't that be, that's ninety-four, Article ninety-seven land? Wouldn't that be considered Article ninety-seven land? We need a vote of the legislature to change that.
No, okay, I couldn't, yeah, no.
No, 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 no.
This hasn't been, yeah.
I wasn't proposing for, I was not proposing, I'm, I'm just talking about-
You wanted to sell the school too, didn't you?
If we get the money back, yeah.
Fire Department.
The sale lease, right, sale lease back, I have a problem with that lease back.
Not until we see their electrical usage bill.
Prisons.
Which school did you have in mind? No, it was not Old Town Pond, you're right, we need to make sure the article specifies that, so it's not up for grabs. I mean, we would condition it, but I think the voters would want that security.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
The other off-the-wall thought I had, I'll just throw it out, I don't even know if we, should I not raise it?
Go ahead, huh?
I don't even know if we can do it. But I-
We can.
We can. You checked it?
Yeah, we've done it before, we, we, we had language in there to use it for a different purpose.
Okay. Our roads have taken a real beating this year. These two storms have, have really played havoc on it. And, um, we, we could use a one-time infusion of some capital into working on these roads. And I, I, as I was thinking through different alternatives for this, we don't need, I mean, we can always have the opportunity to put more money into stabilization, I mean, it's never a bad thing, but the last infusion we made really makes us quite comfortable in terms of our bond rating and things of that nature. So while we can use the reserves, our reserves aren't, we're not at risk there, we're, we're in good shape. Because we've almost doubled our reserves in the last twelve months. I, I had the thought of having the proceeds of, of whatever occurs from this opportunity being dedicated to road repair. And condition the sale on that, that, that whatever monies we get from this transaction are dedicated to fixing roads. We need that infusion of capital. And, and we don't have another source, unless we take it out of stabilization, which I wouldn't favor. We, and one, it's one-time money, so you, you don't wanna see it wrapped into an operational consideration.
Right.
You know, you, you wanna see it go to a, a capital-
Right, whatever that cap, right.
And, and I can't think of one more urgent right now than our roads. So, I, just-
I mean, I, I think that would make some people more happy.
A moment of craziness today.
Or comfortable, right?
Pardon?
I think it would make some voters more comfortable. But I thought the question before, I've seen people raise the question that we had our roads money, you know, override, and that money never got spent for roads. I mean, that would be the thing they're gonna bring up, I assume.
We're not asking for, we're not asking for an override.
No, I know what you mean, but they're gonna bring that, they're gonna bring that back up, I assume.
And we've had overrides for world language, we've had overrides for a whole bunch of things in this town that get lost in, in the operational considerations, and, and it's unfortunate, but, but it, it's not just roads. There've been a number of things that have, you know, voters have, have supported that have gone the way of, and mostly because of the significant budget crunches that we've had. You just can't sustain some of these things. This, this, this is a one-time infusion of capital.
Right.
You know, if, if, whatever number we get, a hundred and fifty to three hundred, whatever the number is, that that money goes to roads. And, and it can make a dent, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars can, it's, that's meaningful to helping us fix some of these roads. I mean, those two storms, you know, did, did some damage. We're not alone, I mean, Rantham, I mean, you know, a Volkswagen could disappear in some of these potholes we got out here. So, that, that was just my thought, I, it's just, I think a very good use of the capital. I, you know, I suspect it would be favorably looked at by the voters, but, you know, they'll get to decide that. And I think it would take away some of the, maybe some of the concerns too. But I, it's, it's, it's just simple, it's as simple as that. We have a glaring need, we don't have any other funding source. This seemed to me to be an opportunity to give an infusion of capital into, into the problem. What do you think?
My only concern that I've kind of voiced to Jim a little bit, um, is just, if there was somebody that thought the money should be spent on something else, I don't want them to vote against selling the Town Hall because they think the money should be used for something else. I'd rather have this be the first step, generate the money, have it go into the coffers-
And then appropriate it?
And then appropriate, have the debate about where the money gets spent. At a later point.
That's a valid point, I, I, you know, um, you could also say that it might encourage someone to vote for it, knowing that, that it is going for a dedicated purpose. Because unless you so designate, in theory, you could use it for anything. And so you're, you know, unless you specify, you're leaving it to the discretion of this board and a subsequent vote, because we would have-
A subsequent vote, I mean-
But we would recommend the appropriation.
Yeah.
I, I don't know which side of the argument, uh, is valid.
Throw it out there. I think they're both valid, I think, it's, you have to make a judgment on which one you think is more appealing or is it gonna get more votes. I think Jack's, you know, suggestion probably, because like you said, they're, it's pet projects, right, so someone might wants it to go to cars or to retrofitting energies and they want us to-
That's a good idea.
You know, I know what you, you know, I mean, so you're gonna get those votes versus how many votes you lose this, if I know it's only going to roads, I'm gonna vote for that.
But if there's one, I, I agree, it's, it's possible, but i- if there's one universal issue in this community that, that we all hear about-
I think every time, yeah, it's roads.
And we all share in, it's roads. And, and we never have enough, and we never will have enough.
I was gonna say, we never have enough.
And so, i- if, this, this can help, and, and we, and, and add to it, and I'm thinking of it politically, I'm, I'm thinking of it practically. To me, that is a very glaring need for a one-time infusion of capital. Sure, we could use a, a new this, a new that, and another car, so, but those are nice to halves, they're not critical. We, we'll survive without them, we gotta fix these roads. And, and, you know, Bob maximizes, he's done a great job in, in maximizing every available dollar. We've gotten more bang for the buck, um, recently than we have in quite some time. But it's still not enough.
Hey, Bob's done a great job, uh, Department has done a great job under Bob's leadership. Not only in the roads, but, uh, in the snowstorms, it's been a interesting month.
Um, think about it, and, and we can make the decision at the next meeting. But, that's my thought.
Change that you'd wanna make then Article Z is adding, but it's, you know, with the provision-
But we'd add in the language for the road to the Town Pond, that was just an oversight, I mean, we all-
Or we leave it that way with Town Pond.
And then I, I, if, my vote would be to, to have the, the proceeds be dedicated to road repair and specify that in the article. I, I-
Does that have to then be re-appropriated, Jack, after that too? Do whatever you want.
It's, it's, you know, it takes two of us to agree.
If it's in there, does it automatically then go to roads, or does it actually have to be re-appropriate, you know, rewrote on again?
You know, we could put it into, we created a capital stabilization fund, um, you know, we could, we could, that might be a kind of a clean way of, uh,
I asked that question.
Protecting the money.
I was afraid it won't get back in there, we get it, and then you'll get more done.
I mean, the worst-case scenario is you wait till the fall and appropriate it, that's the worst-case scenario.
Yeah. I think it would be a good idea if we put it into the capitalization, capital project stabilization fund that we created. Didn't we, did we create a road stabilization project?
No, we did not. We did not. We did a capital.
We did just capital?
Right.
But it might be a good idea to put it in there so that if, between the, you know, May and the, all the-
I mean, ideally, if we could find a way to spend it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that would be the best scenario.
So, and allow to be appropriated?
Right.
And appropriate the proceeds?
Yes. That's where-
You're going even a step farther than I was thinking, okay.
Oh, I mean, that was my thought.
I was thinking of just earmarking it for future appropriation.
We, we need to, we need to spend it.
You're thinking about appropriating.
If we, if we're able to get it, if we are able to, you know, if this goes through town meeting and we can get this thing right on the market, you know, sixty days, we might have some, we might, well, not probably, certainly ninety. We, we have a shot at getting some money in here. That still gives us time in, in the, in the fall to do substantial work on the roads. If we wait till the fall meeting, we have to really wait till the spring before that money can be utilized. Because, you know, you can't do much road repair December, February.
Right.
That was my thought, that's, so, that's why I was thinking, if there's a way we could get that infusion of capital into the DPW and make sure it's dedicated to roads, that would be a good thing.
Well, I, I did, I only looked at it as far as earmarking it for a purpose.
And I, I don't know if we can do that, that's why I asked, I don't know, you have to check with council, I don't, I don't ever recall having-
Well, we, we have a line item in the budget funded by-
The proceeds of the sale.
Proceeds of sale. And then if we don't have a sale, you don't have any proceeds.
You don't have any money.
We just don't, yeah.
That wouldn't be any different.
We just don't know what the dollar amount is.
Yeah, we won't know what the dollar amount is either.
We usually tell me votes-
Yeah, you have to have a number, don't you?
A number, yeah.
Well, we could put a number.
Up to-
We could put a number, up to.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
To not exceed-
Up to one billion.
One billion, sharks with lasers.
That's, that's a very good idea, because that's not unlike what we did with the capital. And the prison mitigation money. Which we never got.
Not yet.
Okay, all right, thank you for- Uh, should we talk about that other one?
Sure. The one below it?
Sure.
Article AAA. So this was, uh, town meeting general bylaws about town meeting procedure, sorry, the town, towns' general bylaws about town meeting procedure. So, I just, you know, throw something out, I took the word twice out and replaced it with thrice. I thought about three times rather than thrice, but, uh, so that this would allow somebody to get up to the microphone three times on each article. You can change it wherever you want, I just-
Yeah.
Then also add the ability to suspend the rules, which would limit you to three times. But that would be, it's just like the article, the provision that allows you to limit, uh-
Well, you can call the vote.
Yeah, you can call the vote, you can limit conversation. This would allow you to expand conversation, I guess. But it would be immedi-, it would be a vote that the, you know, it'd be a motion for a vote that the moderator would have to allow, and then it'd be a two-thirds vote. And I just took those from the, the opposite of the, you know, the vote limiting, uh, conversation.
Is the language to, um, call the vote subject to the discretion of the moderator, is that language in there for that?
Yes.
It is, okay. So this just changes it from two to three and gives the moderator the opportunity, under the rules, to consider suspending the rule entirely to allow further debate on any particular topic.
I don't know, we, I mean, we talked, Rob, we talked about all different numbers, so I, you know, I put three in there for conversation, you can, I mean, certainly, it's an easy fix.
What do you think, Scott?
I mean, I don't think, it's, it's not a, it's not a big change, so I mean, you know, to be able to speak two or three times, is that gonna entice more people to come to meeting or, you know, that's, I think, was the whole goal, right, to have a, one, have a meaningful dialogue, which is Rob's goal and your goal. My goal was, you know, see if we can get more people just to come. And the theory being that they don't feel like they can speak, so they don't come.
So, what would you...
I mean, given to speak one more time, I'd say, you know, just, I'd say it would increase some percentage of people coming just because it's, you know, it's a 50% increase in times you can speak. I don't have a number in mind, because I know, you know, unless you go back to the total archaic way where there's unlimited speaking, but then...
It's not archaic.
Not archaic. I mean, I think it's archa...
I've been looking through town meeting rules online and, you know, Wellfleet has the two rules and you get your head cut off. Of course, Wellfleet allows you to speak for 10 minutes at a time. But, you know, Walpole, the only, the rules I've seen, like Dudley, Walpole, they have, you can't talk a second time until anyone else has had a chance to speak.
Which is fair.
Which is what...
And I always state that as well.
I say that.
But then you can talk unlimited after that.
If there's, but also, I mean, we've got to remember the moderator can shut it down. And it's funny, I'll send you some of these links, but some of these, Concord has a primer on town meeting and it's very conversational, chatty, and basically it says the moderator's job is to move the meeting along. And they'll decide. It actually says the meeting, when the meeting has decided that, all new facts have come out. The moderator may say, if there are no facts, we've been debating this for 20 minutes, something like that. You know, I mean, town meeting really needs to be more organic and serve the people who are there, not the piece of paper that's in the bylaw. It should serve the people who are there and serves the people who are there by serving full debate, by providing full debate on an article. When you can't get up a third time because you've gotten up twice and you have something to add to the debate, then we have cheapened it and we're not getting the right amount of discussion.
I agree. A town meeting is the really only one opportunity we have to communicate as openly as we can. And people need to have information and to have the process limited, to me, does a disservice to the voter.
So, I asked, so what, we changed it, why? Because it was too long? I mean, I don't understand why then we changed, you know...
I was on the group.
Okay, you agreed with it. I mean, there seemed to be a problem in the past, yeah.
I, well...
This is the Rob rule.
No, no, this one wasn't mine. Well, it was a new moderator.
Right.
And he wanted to, he thought that the reason people weren't coming to town meeting...
Because it's too long. Or someone was monopolizing the meeting or...
Well, it did happen. I mean, you know, but, you know, the prior moderator, Mr. Gross, was very good at kind of making that arbitrary decision when enough was enough. But, you know, we did have some folks that got up and there were no time limits. And I remember one presentation that went on for, you know, 25 minutes, I think. I mean, you know, most of us got up and went out and got a cup of coffee. I mean, it was just ridiculous.
But that's happened in the past couple of years with these rules.
To some degree, but not to the extent that it did in the past.
So, that was a thought to maybe...
This was designed to, you know, speed it up and make it more efficient. I think it's probably the best way to say it.
I have no, I have no problem with a two-minute, three-minute rule. You get up and you're on the clock.
Yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, say what you say and then sit down, but what about the next two? You know, you might have something else that's worth two minutes. Okay. I mean, I would love something like, unless otherwise approved by the moderator, no person shall speak a second time until all others have had a chance to speak.
Well, that's in there now.
And just leave it at that.
We'll just leave it at that.
Leave it at that.
Go back.
And for no more than three minutes or two minutes.
I mean, if you do a timeline...
So, basically, just limit the number of time. Just take away that piece. That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Because we're letting the people decide anyway. So, this is the people at town meeting. If they want to listen, they have the right to know. The 100 people who show up can decide whether they want to continue to have, you know...
You know, in the past, Frank wouldn't allow, move the question. He would, when people would jump up, he would say, "We don't have that motion here." And it could go on. This moderator does allow that. A future moderator may not allow it. It is really the tradition of New England town meeting that it takes the personality of the moment.
Well, I don't have a strong bias on this one way or the other, other than to give people an opportunity to have dialogue that is meaningful to helping them make decisions. So, whatever you guys think.
I'm with Rob then.
Maybe, yeah, again, we'll hear from the people when we talk about the R F anyways. They have the chance to... But at that time, they're going to speak twice, right? Until Shane, they're going to speak twice. Well, so, Rob, you're going to speak twice. So, speak fast, three minutes.
I have some questions prepared.
So, what are you recommending?
Well, actually, I don't have the existing in front of me.
Well, conceptually.
Conceptually, just a second time until everyone else has that chance to speak.
Basically, it's going back to the old bylaw, isn't it?
I think so.
Pretty much.
Yeah, I would just cut out A. Just cut out A and make B, C, and D.
A, B, and C.
Because A is the two-time provision. D is the provision, I think, that says you can't speak a second time until...
That's good.
Right, which is a good thing.
B is five minutes, leave that in.
So, yeah, then you'll have, I mean...
Because five minutes is a long time.
It already says three minutes on the second and subsequent terms.
There you go.
You're planning ahead.
And this is nothing against, again, I felt when we met with the moderator that she was taking this personally.
She said she wasn't, though, so...
She said she wasn't, but she got very agitated at the meeting. And if anyone should be agitated, I'm the one who was on the committee that came up with these rules. Matter of fact, one of the other people who I have heard express regret about the rule was another person on the committee that came up with these rules. These aren't her rules.
They're a town and a committee and town voted on. They're the people's rules. Now you can change it. If they don't like it, they won't change it. It's the people's rules, that's right. You're one of the people's rules.
I can understand where someone would like these rules. I, you know, I can see both sides of the equation. So, I respect both views on that. But I think, I think it's a good thing to revisit and let the town decide. You know, I mean, what's... It's their meeting. It's kind of the way I look at it. It's their meeting. So, I think they should be, you know, they should have an opportunity to have a vote on their rules. Even if I disagreed with them, I would feel that way. So, you want to eliminate A? Is that what you're recommending?
Yeah, that's what I guess, too.
And, Mr. Bugby, what's your view?
That's fine. No, I agree with that. I'm a A.
Sounds like that's the pleasure of the board.
So, I'll meet with the, I'll share this with the bylaw committee. They can perfect it. She does that so well.
Well, when you do meet with the bylaw committee, in the past, particularly a hunting article, I felt that the intent was significantly changed. And my view of the bylaw committee was more, it's like a committee in bills and third reading in the legislature, which is you're correcting errors, you're making sure that it fits with the rest of the bylaw. It's in proper form and it's not, it doesn't outright contradict something else that would already be in there. So, I would hope the intent that the board expressed tonight would be carried through in the new, in whatever comes out of the bylaw committee.
Well, this bylaw will be, I assume, submitted by us.
Right, but the hunting bylaw was submitted by us, too.
But we changed it back.
Yes, we did. I just don't want to get into that position again.
I mean, while this may not be simplistic in terms of procedural, it is simplistic in terms of language and...
And intent. Intent's very clear.
Yeah.
It's interesting. I've, the bylaw committee shall make periodic review of the need for amendment or revision of the town bylaws and make appropriate recommendations to town meeting in respect to proposed action thereon.
Doesn't say anything about reviewing other people's articles.
No, it doesn't. That's, so, I mean, so, really, I don't have to go.
The bylaw committee can generate its own.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they do.
So, in legislative parlance, it's a, what do you call that? It's like an original, it has the ability to generate its own legislation.
And what are we going to do with the warrant? We're going to mail it?
The advisory board's going to mail it, yeah. Yeah, I think that's universal. Everybody's in agreement.
Will we need to transfer money from their...
Yeah.
Emergency reserve?
Reserve fund. I don't think it'll be, it'll be a relatively...
But they're in agreement.
Oh, yeah.
So, good. So, we will be mailing out the warrant to all residents this year. Good.
Absolutely.
Good decision.
Interesting.
The zoning articles, I was talking with Jack about this and there are...
Lots of them.
Yeah, and there's some contradictions. So, what I thought, rather than our getting into this tonight if you're in agreement, let's invite the committee in at our next meeting.
That'd be better.
Because we may have...
Make it easier for me, at least.
We may have to play...
Well, delete...
All of us, you're not alone. And, you know, we may, because there's some, when you read through these, there are some contradictions. There are some differing views, so we may have to play somewhat solemn in this particular discussion. Is that okay with you guys? So, we'll defer those until the 26th, 5th, whatever, 6th?
There's a zoning bylaw committee tomorrow night if anybody's interested in going.
You know, I think, this is just my own bias, I'm a fan of not influencing the committee's work when they go through this. That's their job and there's a time and a place to debate differences of opinions. You guys obviously are free to see it differently if you so choose, but...
It's a public meeting. You're welcome to go.
Okay. Any other articles on here we need to talk about tonight?
The chief's updating on that.
Oh, did you get a letter from a gentleman over in, you didn't?
I don't know what you're talking about. We haven't had a single complaint for five years.
You have gotten a gift that you didn't have a couple of days ago. I'm impressed. Regarding the naming of a road over in the Stop River area.
We did.
We did, but we got it too late to bring it to mind. Because the agenda was already closed and so it just, when I got it...
Would you like us to share that letter with you?
I just gave it to Chuck to...
Okay, so it hasn't been reviewed, is what you're saying? Chuck hasn't, okay.
Yeah, he hasn't seen it until tonight.
Right? Over on Oaknall?
Yes, yeah. Okay. I just, I got a call on it asking if we could take action.
Intrigued. Speaking in code.
No, no, not speaking, I mean, I apologize. It's just, go ahead, Jack.
Well, the request was to name the road Bridal Path, so...
Right. And Chuck had concerns that it was too close to Bridy Lane.
It is.
And so, so he, so... So, he came up with another recommendation that he forwarded to us and the only reason I asked is that I ran into him and I told him that I didn't think we could get it on the agenda. He was very nice. It's just, I think he...
So, what is it, once Bridal, this was originally wanted to be Bridal or Bridy?
Bridal.
Bridal, and we have a Bridy Lane.
Right, so they had no, the chief had no problem with Midway Branch and Midway Street. You know how many times I have to explain it to people when they call like...
That's older than Chuck.
I know what you mean. You know, it's funny. No, because I think that's funny, you know, because they always call like, oh, so Midway Street, like, don't...
There are things in this town that are older than Chuck.
They could change some streets because of that. And two that were very Spring Street and Spring Lane.
We kept the Dancing Berries, though.
Galloping.
Galloping Berries.
Galloping. Okay.
Galloping fruit.
So, we'll get that on the agenda for next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, not a problem.
What's next?
Would you, I, just, I mean, I can, the request wasn't for a, as our, as our...
President curmudgeon.
Czar, too.
Our street name is Czar.
As our policies say, would you like me to push back on him and ask him for a veteran or a historical significance or...
Well, Old Cart Path sounds like it has a historical significance.
It does.
Was this a cart path at one time?
Yes, and it was called that. And it's actually on some of the old maps.
There you go.
So, we're leaning to approve that?
I wasn't going to get into it, but yes.
You were ready.
I was ready for you. We could call it Colonel Old Cart Path if that would make you feel better.
No, I think that's, keep it simple.
Yeah, there is actually some historical reference to that.
Is there an update on the Yukon score?
Not by me, no.
Good.
I'm looking at the boons. I don't care about the Yukon woman.
Are we keeping you guys away from anything in particular? Would you rather be somewhere else today?
Eating dinner, that's all I want.
We've been, we introduced the kids to West Wing on Netflix.
Oh, I was going to say, I thought maybe TV Land or something like that.
No, and there's, and the president would say, "What's next?" And he gets into this whole thing where his staff is arguing about the previous issue and he stops and he says, "When I say what's next, that means we're ready to move on to something else." So, what's next?
What's next?
Mr. Chairman.
Just ask you guys before the next meeting, when the guys come in, if you could, if we could all get ourselves up to date on one particular article that I think is going to be entertained quite a bit, and that is regarding the frontage roads or lack thereof. I think we're all in agreement.
I think so.
Yeah. But there are contradictory views on this, so... This is one, this is one I think we should weigh in on.
Yeah, it's an important one that we have to address because there's a couple of business proposals.
It has, it's having a significant impact on development down in that 1A area. I mean, of all the places we have in town that, this is just a personal view, that we should be encouraging as much development as we possibly can. That's it. And we ought to be, within the constraints of our rules, you know, we ought to be doing things to encourage businesses, not discourage businesses and not making it unreasonably difficult for reasons that are beyond me, honestly. I mean, I'd like, I haven't heard a logical argument for it, but maybe there is one out there. Have you?
Well, there is if we were to be the next, I don't know, you know, Foxborough or Norwood Route 1, but that's not going to happen down there. You want it when you get a lot of traffic taking left and right, but it's not...
This isn't Natick.
No, it's not. It's not.
Okay. Anything else on the articles?
No.
Okay. Mr. Hathaway?
On the zoning, that's it. That's all I got.
Accept the minutes. I can, but I move to accept the minutes of February 26, 2013, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? How in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rob, you got anything for us?
Well, apparently not, since Madison screwed my life up, so...
Sorry. Damn you, that changed Madison. Sorry about that.
It's Madison. No, I'm all set.
Scott?
No, I'm good.
Chuck shared something with me the other day, just to throw a good job out to, we had Officer Menezes and Officer Hines, Sergeant Hines, I should say, just respond to a 911 call and then there was nobody at the house and they ended up talking, you know, they started leaving and they ended up talking to neighbors and finding that there was a medical emergency going on inside. So, they worked their way into the house and helped out an individual who otherwise would have been in distress.
Good for them. Excellent. Good for them.
Did a good job. And there's been a lot, you know, I said it earlier, but I just think that DPW did, that last storm was more than any of the experts predicted and unfortunately, it was such a long duration. There was a...
It must have been a long day.
I think we're all qualified to be weathermen in Massachusetts. We could screw it up just as badly as they have. We could be wrong that much.
Why not? Why not? Go ahead.
Six inches or six, 24 inches.
I think it was great that the schools didn't just plow ahead, you know, fun, with their initial decision to go half-day and re-decided that. I thought that was good of them to do that.
Yeah, I wanted to compliment them as well. It's obviously coordinated with DPW and reevaluated, yeah, I agree. That was a good decision.
That was fun.
Turned out to be a pretty long day.
Oh, they were coming home, you know, they would have been coming home in the midst of it.
That was a great example of the way it should work. Other business? Well, I know we have an executive session.
Nope.
Mary, I missed that one.
Okay.
You're supposed to remind me to say something.
Did, is there some?
Oh, the advisory board is meeting tomorrow night if you're... Advisory board is starting their, they've got three meetings. They're hoping to wrap it up in three meetings. So, they're starting tomorrow night with CPC and they're going to actually have Mr. Nicodemus in to talk about zoning, although that's obviously...
So, they don't want us tomorrow night?
They do not. They want us on the 27th, the last Wednesday in March.
Okay, I should get that down. Thank you for being with us this evening. We do have an executive session. We'll be going into executive session by roll call vote. Do I have a motion? Let me actually state, we're going into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining or litigation and if we were to remain in open meeting, it may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public.